Okay, it's officially 9:30, so we'll call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Safety and justice for all.
And if the clerk could take the roll, please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Here.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
The first item is a review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And we have approval of the minutes from our May 9th County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. So we originally had two items under Chair's remarks today, but due to unforeseen circumstances with our scheduled guests, we're going to move the presentation regarding our partnership with the Coon Rapids Arts Commission to host this summer concert series at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park to our next board meeting, which is June 13th. I can tell you that the weekly concerts begin on Thursday, June 8th, at 7:00 PM, and for more information, go to www.inokacounty.us and search "summer concert series." The next item under Chair's remarks today is the recognition of some of the men and women who have spent much of their careers in service to the citizens of Inoka County. The employees we recognize today have been here for up to 40 years, which is truly remarkable. If you look across this room today, just the wealth of experience and knowledge is absolutely incredible. The employees we recognize are truly remarkable, and on behalf of the residents of Inoka County, it's our privilege to say thank you to each and every one of you to your dedicated service. Some of the recipients are not able to be here with us today, but we will call their name in order to make sure we're still recognizing their service. I'd like to invite Deputy County Administrator Dee Goodman to lead our recognition program. Dee?
Thank you, Commissioner. As I call your name, please come up to accept your award. Commissioner Cordiaq, you're up first to present.
First speaker is Fred Odusmo, the head of New York.
Exactly. Okay. For 30 years of service...Commissioner, if you want to step out there.
You're welcome.
That's okay. For 30 years of service to Inoka County, Alan Gunderson, his job is Child Support Collections and he works in finance. Alan is gone today, but we congratulate him. 30 years of service to Carol Fleischer, Office Support for Economic Assistance. Actually, she's not here today, too. The next one is John Leon, Senior Praiser, Property Tax and Taxation. The next one is...nope, we have one more, sir. The next one is Terry Patterson, Property Specialist, Number Three of Property Tax and Taxation. All right. Thank you. The next commissioner up is Commissioner Gamache. Okay. For 30 years of service to Inoka County, Terry Patterson...oh, I'm sorry, Terry Kite, Imaging Systems Administrator from IT Department. The next one, for 30 years of service is Thomas Thor, PC Specialist, IT Department. The next commissioner up is Commissioner Brassad. Okay. For 30 years of service to Inoka County, we have Renee Hank, Lead Dispatcher in Central Communications. For 30 years of service to Inoka County, we have Gordon Hughes, Lead Dispatcher, Central Communications. For 30 years of service to Inoka County, Paul Summers, Commander, Sheriff's Office. And for 30 years of service, Scott Neeling from the deputies...he's a deputy, he's in the sheriff's office and he is absent today. So thank you, Commissioner. The next commissioner up is Commissioner West. Okay. For 30 years of service to Inoka County, we have Catherine Christensen, Nutrition Assistant at Community Health. Catherine is absent today. The next one we have up is 30 years of service to Janet Kreider, Principal Account Service The next, for 30 years of service to Inoka County, we have Nancy Lee, she's a Senior Social Worker in Social Services. Next up, for 30 years of service is Marlene Keller, Office Support, Social Services. Next commissioner up is Commissioner Look. And for 30 years of service to Inoka County, we have Larry Hoyam, County Surveyor, Surveyors' And for 30 years of service, we have Jack Stevenson, Survey Cad Specialist from the Survey Commissioner Silveraja. And for 30 years of service, we have Nancy Hanson, Economic Assistance Program Manager, Economic Assistance. She is absent today, but congratulations to her. The next up is we have Laura Breveld, PHN Manager in Community Health and Services. Next up, we have a new category, 35 years of service to Marcy Crane, Chief Deputy County Attorney, Attorney's Office. She is absent today, but congratulations to Marcy. And the next category is 40 years of service to Inoka County, Tony Palumbo, County Attorney, Attorney's Office.
Well, thank you so much, Dee. Does anyone have any other comments at all that they'd like to offer? Okay. Well, I just want to say that we are so incredibly fortunate to have so many long-term loyal employees of Inoka County, and your breadth of knowledge is so incredibly impressive and the depth of knowledge. And in this room, you represent 615 years of service to Inoka County, which is incredible. The citizens benefit each and every day from your expertise and your commitment. So again, thank you for your dedication to serving the citizens of Inoka County, and we just appreciate the opportunity to honor you here today. Congratulations. Right? I also want to take just a moment to invite everyone out to the Memorial Day Services presented by the Veterans Organizations of Inoka County. There will be two amazing services this Saturday, May 26th, to honor our veterans, their families, and the military. The first service begins at 10 o'clock AM at the Morningside Memorial Gardens located at 11800 University Avenue Northwest in Coon Rapids. A second service takes place in Bunker Hills Regional Park at the Inoka County Veterans Memorial, beginning at 11:30 AM. With Bunker Lake Boulevard under construction, I would suggest entering the park from the south at Foley Boulevard and Main, which is also known as County Road 14. Speakers include Retired Lieutenant Colonel Sean Gustafson, US Army Combat Engineer, and the Honorable Jenny Walker Jasper, Inoka County Veterans Court Judge. Also, everyone is invited to attend the family picnic, which will follow the ceremony at Bunker Hills Regional Park, and that is being provided by the Inoka County Veterans Council. Again, these are two great opportunities to never forget and ever honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in serving our country's armed forces. It's an honor and privilege to be able to support this organization, and we hope that you can make it out to join us this Saturday. So that concludes our Chair's remarks for today, and we will now move on to committee reports. The first of which is Management Committee Report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All of my items are informational items. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. That was short and sweet. Now we'll move on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Look will be standing in for Commissioner Schulte today.
Madam Chair, thank you. The Transportation Committee was held on May 15th, and we came away with three action items. The first of which is the Committee recommended approval of Resolution 2017-TR14, a resolution to enter into a master partnership contract with MINDOT for the purpose of purchasing services from MINDOT or for MINDOT to purchase services from Inoka County. And I see Doug is here, he might be able to shed a little bit more light on that for what type of services may be purchased.
Doug?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Look, County Board Members, my name is Doug Fisher, I'm the County Engineer and Transportation Division Manager. Typically, the type of services that we use are related to our construction projects. All the concrete, asphalt materials that come out of plants are inspected by MINDOT. They provide that plant inspection for us, and we reimburse them for those inspections. Beams for bridges, they have to be inspected either at the fabrication facility or the plant, MINDOT does that. That's primarily what we do, but also it allows us to enter into agreements. If a guardrail on a bridge is damaged, then it's really a MINDOT guardrail, but Inoka County fixes it on their behalf. We have a way of exchanging funds for services provided back and forth between us. And again, this is a contract that we've used in the past, and again, it just streamlines that process and allows for that work to occur in the most efficient and effective manner.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner West. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the second item is the Committee recommends approval to enter into joint powers agreement, C triple zero four nine eight seven, with the City of Fridley for the project, project number 002-601-048, the traffic signal reconstruction at the intersection of Cassaw One or East River Road and Cassaw Six, Mississippi Street or Mississippi Way in the City of Fridley.
Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
There's a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the third item is the Committee recommends approval of purchase of service agreement, C triple zero five seven four three, with Bolton and Mink Consulting Services to provide construction inspection services for Project CP 17-01-00. It's the countywide overlay program, and this is a program that we do every year, and this year it's coming in about $96,000.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of service agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner.
I was wondering, Doug, do we have the...all the...this map in an area where I could just pull it up and go over the roads and look at all the different ones and just have some comments from people that are asking questions on different roadways and which ones we're working on? It'd be handy to have that available.
Doug?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gamache, County Board Members, yes, we are actually just preparing that right now because we are finalizing not only the work that we contract out, such as the overlays in our major reconstruction projects, but essentially any project, major culvert repairs, cracked ceiling, signal painting, the flashing yellow arrows, that include our whole program on a singular map. So that will be coming out soon. We will be posting that on our website as well, but certainly I'll be distributing those paper copies as well for you to have. Again, and again, the reason for this, using consultant services, is the size of our program is so overwhelming. And again, we hire just to fill in the peaks. You know, we have staff to do the base load, but because of the large size of our program this year, we do need a little help. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote on this and then have a follow-up question. Doug, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Motion carries. Doug, could you maybe highlight for people how long this program might take or when they may see it? I know there's already been work going on, but just so the public has an idea.
Madam Chair, this work will continue throughout the whole construction season. Obviously, our large corridor projects, Bunker Lake Boulevard, Foley Boulevard, those will extend into the fall. The overlay projects and the resurfacing, the reclaiming overlay projects that we're doing will also go towards the end of October. We are very sensitive to projects near schools, so that when school starts, that we're not...these are not impediments to the various school and the busing routes for those schools. So a lot of the closures will occur before Labor Day, but the work certainly, again, because of the size and the extent of the program, will continue well into the fall. But again, weather permitting, if the sun would come out, would certainly help us with a lot of this work, but it is a very large program. We're excited to get it done, and I think by this fall, our bail will be very happy with the results.
Thank you. Commissioner Brassad?
I would just like to thank Doug and his staff. On Sunday, my phone was ringing off the hook about a project up on County 15, and literally within an hour, someone was out there taking care of it and grading the...grading it down. The heavy rains caused a lot of havoc up there, and you know, I just really am thankful for the good turnaround that we've seen.
All right. Great work by staff. Sure.
Yes.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner?
Madam Chair, the rest is for informational purposes only.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Finance Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, the Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on May 16th, and while generally transportation has a lot of line items, Finance and Capital Improvement today build that role. We have nine items...nine action items to bring before you this morning. The first is the County...the Committee recommends the County Board issue a purchase agreement to Home Depot through Inoka County US Communities Contract or the Columbia Heights License Center Customer Service Area Remodel Project. This is a project, it's a three-part project, this is the third part of it, where we're realigning the inside of this service center so it serves people better, there's fewer blind spots, and kind of makes...brings it in line with the rest of the license centers that we have. The reason for doing that, of course, is sometimes we have staff coming from various different license centers, and we kind of want to standardize on where the plates are and the tabs are and everything else, so there's no additional training required to work at various different license centers. This is a project that's not to exceed $59,620 and 2 cents, so...
No 3 cents. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner West, second...okay, moved by Commissioner Cordiaq, second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the second item is the Committee recommends the County Board approve the following requests. This is a two-part item. The first is that we're looking to reject the current bids for the FAR roof replacement project and request authorization to rebuild the project. We went out for requests for quotes or bids on this project, and what we found is that right now the roofing industry is saturated with work and...and the work that...this is a more difficult project, you might say, in the realm of doing roof projects, and so we found that the bidding was extremely high, kind of...kind of an indication that they didn't want it, but if they got it, they would make a hefty profit margin on it. So we want to rebid this project at a time later when maybe the industry isn't so crazy and saturated with work out there. The second part of it is to approve contract, C triple zero five seven one three, with Central Roofing Company out of Fridley, for the completion of the field operations building roof replacement in a project in an amount not to exceed $33,200. This is the old Sheriff's Building, and a lot simpler project and a lot more competitive bid on that one, so we want to go ahead and exercise that one.
Is there a motion to move...to move items two A and B?
Moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just one question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Look, what is the F A H R roof replacement? What's that building?
The FAR is one of the cottages that we have up on Rum River Campus up here.
Thank you.
Lot of...lot of valleys and peaks and rebuilding roof. We have to put foam in there, increase ventilation. It's probably in the million, $2 million range, something like that, so it's a very extensive project that I think, well, there's probably few roofers that can actually tackle a project like this. They happen to be bigger roofing companies, and I think that they're also probably busy on a lot of other projects, too, based on the quote that came in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Madam Chair, I'm seeking some clarification. What is the old Sheriff's Office building? I know the new one is, I know where it came from, which is my backyard. Which building do you refer to?
The...Madam Chair, the old Sheriff's Office is on the corner of Bunker and Hanson, where the field operations is now for...we meet for recycling and that sort of thing.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the third item is the Committee recommends the County Board approve contract, C triple zero five six six six, with the Inoka County Agricultural Society, known as the Fair Board, for the management supervision of the Inoka County fairgrounds and buildings. This is a 20-year agreement, and it has an automatic renewal on it. As you'll recall, we've had a...been...been about the work of putting together a pretty good relationship with the County Fair Board, and we've been making improvements out there and helping them to fund some of the improvements that they want to make. We generally made a $15,000 annual payment to the County Fair, but some of these improvements, they were going to take loans out to build buildings, and so we fronted money, and so this...this agreement kind of identifies that. It identifies who owns the buildings and the maintenance on the buildings and the insurance requirements for the County Fair and holding the county harmless and all the...all the legal details required, something that I don't think we've had in the past, it's just kind of been understood, but this is putting it down on paper. And from information I'm getting back, the County Fair Board is very, very happy with this clarification and with the relationship that we're...that we have with them, so...
Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
There's a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, item number four, the Committee recommends the County Board approve an increase in impress or change funds for the following Inoka County Departments, Treasury Department, Environmental Services, and Parks for North and South Rangers. It's a small amount of change drawer type of increases and necessary for their day-to-day operation.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the fifth item is the Committee recommends the County Board issue a purchase order for 60 radios from the state contract with Motorola in an amount not to exceed $255,000. While this seems high, Motorola kind of has the corner on the market on a necessary piece of equipment.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cordiaq. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiaq.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, item six is the Committee recommends the County Board adopt Resolution 2017-F4 approving amendments to Inoka County Purchasing and Contract...Contracting Policy and rescinding Resolution 2005-37. The...the amendments are attached here, but essentially they're falling in line with federal requirements and...and updating some of the procedures that we have for efficiency internally.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, item number seven, the Committee recommends the County Board adopt Resolution 2017-F3 providing for prepayment of the 2018 Certificate of Participation Bonds, and this is bonds that were issued for ACAP, and they were wanting to defuse these bonds early and...and take care of that, so this is that resolution.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion?
Is this an item I abstain?
So Commissioner West will be abstaining because it has to do with...she sits on the ACAP Board, and it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Abstain.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, item number eight, the Committee recommends the County Board approve changes in the Financial Policy Section under Travel, Meals, and General Expense Reimbursement Policy. policy. Um, that's also attached and presented here, and essentially what it's doing is raising the, the, um, levels, um, that we're finding a lot of these travel and expenses exceed the, the level we had prior, um, and so we're increasing it, uh, slightly.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Brastad. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Madam Chair, item number nine, the committee recommends the county board approve contract, see 005765 with Borderlines Pavement Maintenance out of Anoka for snow removal and ice control services, and, um, we've used Borderlines before in the past, uh, they've done a great job, they were the lowest, most responsible bidder, and we believe that, uh, they'll do a fine job for us going forward.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, second by Commissioner West. Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that concludes the report, and the rest is informational items.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Look, now we'll move on to Human Services Committee report. We have a couple of items on the consent agenda unless someone wants to pull something out separately, I will move the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brastad. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye. Motion carries. Under Community Health and Environmental Services, consider recommending the county board enter into the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families or TANF Grant Project Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health in an estimated amount of $315,522 per year from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019 totaling $631,044. And then the next item is to consider recommending the county board enter into contract, see 0005689 with the University of Minnesota Extension to implement comprehensive workplace wellness as part of the SHIP grant in an amount of $36,000 from May 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2017, and appreciate the great working relationship, um, with that organization. And then the next item is to consider recommending the county board accept the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Agreement renewal with the Minnesota Department of Health in an estimated amount of $173,308 for public health emergency preparedness and $61,560 for the city's readiness initiative for a total estimate of $234,868, and that's from July 1st of 2017 through June 30th, 2018 pending approval by the county attorney's office. I will move items 3, 4, and 5. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then I'll offer resolution 2017-HR 12, the economic assistance bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes my report. Now we'll move on to Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee report. Commissioner Brastad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is that the committee recommends the county board approve renewing the following medical examiner contracts for a two-year term from January 1st, 2018 through December 2019. It's contract with Douglas County, Minnesota, uh, approximate revenue of $40,000 per year, and a contract with Chippewa County, Minnesota, approximate revenue of $10,000 per year.
Is there a motion to approve item 1A and B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends the county board approve renewing the following medical examiner contracts. A contract with Douglas County, Wisconsin, for a two-year term with a fixed rate revenue of $38,000 per year, and a contract with Burnett County, Wisconsin, for a one-year term with a fixed revenue of $30,000 per year.
Is there a motion to approve items 2A and B?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Further discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
I would just like to comment, uh, what a great job Gary Alberts and his staff do there. They often have a very full schedule, they get things done in good time. They've been told that some places in the experience of these counties that are coming on board with us, they've had to wait quite a while to get the results, and, uh, they also comment of the quality of the, the way the doctors and others there interact with their staff. Really commendable.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, you know, certainly always nice to get that good feedback. Um, we have amazing staff who do a, a tremendous job, and I think the results are showing we continue to have counties that, that come on board, and it seems to be growing all the time. So, thank you.
Uh, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the other items are for informational purposes.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to Public Safety Committee report. Commissioner Brastad.
The committee recommends approval by the county board to expand 2016 central communications carryover funds to purchase the Motor Oil Solutions Asset Management Software System for a cost not to exceed $40,000 to be used by the central communications radio shop to track and record radios.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
The committee recommends approval by the county board to expand capital project funds up to $100,000 for the purchase of a portable radio tower to be used for public safety communications in Anoka County.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Cordiak.
We have tower opportunities throughout the county. Is there something unique or different about this, or are we lacking something, do you know, that, uh, they need better penetration, or what? Madam Chair, that, the benefit of this is that we will have our own portable tower, so when water towers and other structures are under repair, being painted, we don't have to rely on that and rent space. And this'll kinda make us independent on this situation. Good. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, um, from what I understand, the rental, it was very expensive. There was a county that was allowing other counties to use theirs until one of the counties broke it. So that's no longer allowed, so, um, having one, I think, gives us the opportunity to control our own destiny, at least in terms of, if there was an available one, maybe some other county could be using it, we'd be in, you know, tough luck at that point, so, um, while it is expensive, I think the last thing you want to go down is your, your towers for communication purposes, so.
No, can charge them rent.
All right. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.